You're okay.
So I think maybe we can do all of these guys.
Yeah, we have the time thing first and then we can jump down to that. So our nine oh one timed item, Jake Greer.
Yes, I know Ms. Muzini put down that announcement today and I don't have an announcement today. Just more or less, just some of the comments and feedback that was received around the grandstands at the fairgrounds were positive, so I thought now would be a good time to recognize those staff. Not everybody is here, but recognize those staff that were involved with that, including Commissioner Winters, most of my staff from Community Justice and Crime Manager Treasurer and Morning Creek. Correction, it's the whole work crew. Unfortunately, she's on, the work crew leader was on vacation this week and couldn't be here.
And Mel.
And Melanie.
And this, this Muzini, I wasn't done yet.
No.
Good. So I thought at another time we could recognize the work crew staff. Ms. Boucher?
Officer Melanie Bouchers.
Recognize her, her role in supervising inmates while they did a fantastic job.
Well, just mention a little bit on that, she's one that made the recommendation for the numbers on the back of the seats instead of the bottom, which I think looked very good, I guess. And so we did change that. So tell her thank you for that, I guess.
I will.
Thanks for that.
So the feedback from the community was positive. We had a number of our staff that took off two, three days from work, so I appreciate the board commissioners allowing county employees to be able to work down the fairgrounds and instead of working in their office, doing things. I know things backed up. We're really busy this week. We always are after fair, but also taking off those additional days to express things up. Not only did the public enjoy that, but I know our staff enjoyed working down there as well. So I just wanted to thank the board for allowing us to do that and thank those folks who took time out of their day, all day, several days.
Thank you. And like Jake says, there's some that aren't here. Jake, thanks for bringing this to the public setting. I'd like to personally thank Commissioner Shown also for supporting that as the board. I brought it forward as a board and all the employees, not only the ones there, but the ones behind the scenes that made things happen. It was truly, truly a county family that pulled it together. So thank you, everybody. Appreciate it very much. March, have you recovered for being almost the oldest one out there?
I'm pretty good.
You're doing all right, so, all right. So thank you all.
I'm just gonna make a quick comment. I, Commissioner Winters thanked me. I had nothing to do with it other than, as he said, we had to quickly approve some financial outlet that we hadn't planned on. But to all of you, to my fellow commissioners, Commissioner Winters, because we did go down there. We saw John and Buddy down there prior to, what, a week, two and a half, two weeks out, week and a half out. And without a lot of organization and teamwork, it would have never happened. And so as I go back to my role, and I think I've said it in some other venues, it was a no-brainer to support our county and our way of life through that fair and rodeo and the work that you all did. I was so proud. Dave and I were down eating lunch Thursday and grabbed a hold of Nathan and we went up in the grandstands just to show him. He hadn't been up there yet. But I think everyone that I heard from just thought you all did a tremendous, tremendous job. So we truly thank you.
It only took forty-four or five young buckets of paint. It's just a small job. Thanks, thanks to everybody once again. Appreciate it very, very much. Thank you.
How was it?
So, oh, pretty good.
Hey Brad, you need to make sure that Melanie and Melanie are back while we're talking about this.
Yes, Mel, Melanie was the work force. Thank you very much, Jake.
What's that?
Jesse, we normally have a public comment on Wednesdays, but we're in Silver Lake, so come on up.
Okay, well.
To Silver Lake.
Well, what's that?
Tomorrow, tomorrow we're in Silver Lake.
Oh, is tomorrow on the Silver Lake?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Well, I didn't know. I just happened to run into Commissioner Kessler down at the fair and I asked when the, your meetings were. I, I thought it was like on Wednesday was the proper deal, but what I was gonna talk about, he said it was probably better than you for today, so.
Come on up. I guess. I was giving you a hard time about going to Silver Lake.
Okay, well, I probably would have, but I understood it was two weeks away with Silver Lake.
Oh, no.
Oh, okay. So just, like, okay, what I wanted to talk about today, I'm Jesse Lurde from Plush, and what I wanted to talk about is, over the last couple of weeks, we became abreast of an issue going on with the BLM with wilderness characteristics. And we didn't, we found out from some BLM employees, they didn't even know the extent of what was going on. And the jury, I mean, it's still ongoing. I don't know what decisions have been made or not been made. There has been a map that I've been able to see a copy of, which by my estimation takes in about half of all BLM that doesn't have wilderness study area designation. It overlays wilderness characteristics on basically all of the rest of the BLM other than crested wheat seedings and some other specified things out there that didn't need wilderness characteristics. Like I say, this is kind of just at the forefront. I know there's a lot of us in the industry that are very upset about it. It appears that it came out of a settlement with Oregon Natural Desert Association and that it's somewhat, it appears to be somewhat of a closed process, the way it's going on. And my appeal to you as the commissioners, and I know we have a freshly elected commissioner and we have candidates, you know, and the fall to fill out your seat going on. I didn't know, I know there's coordination and cooperation and it's kind of six, half dozen, you know, one or the other, but.
Just a little bit of overview, the BLM has been to us, Todd Forbes, and he has done a presentation to us, and we have requested to be a cooperating agency.
Okay, all right. I wasn't sure if that, I'm.
I don't believe Commissioner Kessler was at that meeting.
He wasn't.
Okay, well, that's what, okay, because I just ran into him because I, I, some of the information I received was actually over the weekend from other channels and stuff.
Commissioner Winters, at least between us, he's agreed to that he would be the one representing us on that because he will be here through that whole process, because it's not gonna happen overnight.
No, yeah, like I say, I don't understand the process. Personally, from the people I've talked to, we don't believe it's a legal process, but who knows? I've been through the bill. I mean, I've, I've seen how these things go and drag on for years and years, our near decade in our certain allotment lawsuits. So as long as, well, I guess that's about as much as I wanted to say.
Jesse, I want to just throw something in here. Last week, I'm gonna be in DC in the middle of September and last week I talked to Congressman Walden's office about a variety of things, but one of those was this. And it wasn't so much the new land that's being talked about and those characteristics. And Commissioner Winters could probably speak to it a little bit better through the Todd presentation. But I said, you know, I think we've been dealing with WSAs for thirty years and they weren't ever intended to be considered wilderness for this long. I think first we need to make a decision on those. So anyway, we're, we set up a time to have some discussion on all of this back there.
Okay, so that makes me real happy that that is, is out there, because, and then my other plug is, I see a lot of this with the new wilderness characteristics going into the desert trail. And I'm not against trails or access to the public lands, quite the contrary. But I feel the way that's being done may be a little bit more, there's more to the story going into this wilderness characteristics and the settlement. Like I say, I don't know a whole lot about it. I just wanted to come and ask you guys to get involved so you guys would know a lot about it. I mean, I'll find out, you know, as this goes along, but I'm very happy that you guys are.
You should schedule a time with, I believe, with Todd Forbes. I gotta give him a jingle and just say, can we chat about this? Because they had a meeting down there after our meeting as well. I'm surprised you weren't aware of that. But I want to go back to your comment about Onda. You heard me over there when we met with Congressman Walden. And that's been my fear all along, and that's why we wrote a letter, how many years ago? Mount here County actually used the same letter. We said, basically, we don't know how to tell you no any better than what we've told you. We have no interest in this. We, as a board, signed that letter, but we had individual interests out there consistently visiting with Onda about all of this. I'm very frustrated about the behind-the-scenes stuff and you all are talking about the very thing that we feared, at least a couple of us, and we're dealing with it right now. And quite frankly, once, you know, if that trail gets certified and everything else and I have a tract on that part, because we said, we don't support this at all. Even though you're not building it, you're just identifying it with waypoints and all of those types of things. But the notion that you're gonna come into Paisley, Oregon, go up the river into the forest and connect to the, to a federally certified trail system tells me all you want to do is have the power when you get out here in our A-Elm Plush area and those areas to control anything that happens within any visual site of that trail, including cattle use, development, anything. And now it's coming home to roost, so we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to roll up our sleeves on this thing.
Yeah, okay. Well, that's, that's basically, I just, I mean, I was pretty sure that you guys were gonna get in the process and I, like I say, a lot of this development has just been, from the information we got, because it has been a lot of closed-in-house booms-ons, and we do know that for a fact. And then I did some research on the internet and found where it was a little bit more open process, but we, we had some designations going back to five years that we were never, that we weren't notified on our allotment. And the problem is, is we just get these overlays, 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 overlays on this land. And then if one restriction doesn't do it, I, I know what restrictions require, you guys understand this, but just like we see from a firefighting point of view. And maintaining range improvements or maintaining roads, ways, I mean, you guys have been through all that. I guess I'm just kind of lost, because I feel that between Heart Mountain and some of these other areas that I disagree with the management on it, we have these sort of things that already pretty much are wilderness. And there's a lot of quasi-wilderness where a cow will never be. I mean, nothing will ever be there. It's just like, it just seems more, 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 and more, and it just ties our hands more and more with management going forward. So that's about all I wanted to.
Jesse, thank you for coming first and foremost, because of all the people that use the desert, whether it's ranching, recreation, or whatever we all enjoy, our desert, of course, should be up separate. Because of these wilderness characteristics, it, it's just blows my mind whenever you, you see them say this has wilderness characteristics and it's been used for many years. Whether it's road or a water hole's been done or whatever, they overlook some of that and still say it has wilderness characteristics. The truth of the matter is, on roads especially, is they would have been maintained if they had the money, but they just didn't have the money over the years, so it shouldn't fit underneath the wilderness characteristics. There's, there's many different things. This isn't good, and I don't know how much we're able to change it, but I do know that the more voices, the better. And, and that comes, you know, not, the cattlemen are usually pretty good, but it's gotta be the recreation people, the hunter and the fisherman, it's, it's gotta be the rock hound, it's gotta be everybody. And you go to this trail, I had no idea of if it got designated as a national trail, that it would have the impact. It can be visual, it can be sound, it can be all kinds of things. And their trail has private properties as a water places for them to stop at. And, and, and I'm not always politically correct, but Onda doesn't come to my office anymore because I tell them no, I tell them hell no. But other people go to their offices and visit with them, and there seems to be a lead of, well, you know, it's okay to have these trails. Oregon Natural Desert Association, to me, means it's natural, they can walk anyplace they want, they don't need to designate a trail. And so I'm getting a little bit off, I should be politically correct, but we told them no and we meant it. And so that's where we're at on that. But I haven't looked, it was supposed to be the post office as a trail, trying to get the public to accept it so they can get this designation. So the more people you can get to reach out and fight it, the better. Please do spend time with Todd Forbes. They, they have to follow what the policies and everything comes down, even if not everybody to be able to support the way things are going, but the more they hear from the public, the better.
Okay, all right, that's all I wanted to share, so.
Thank you for that.
You bet.
Thanks, Jesse.
All right, staying on our end, Kevin Moss, solid waste transfer contract. Come on up. No, that's all right. If we need to take a short break, we can do that. All right, so we have, we've approved the RFP process, so now we need to do a contract for the transfer site.
So I hope in front of you is the seven items of the contract itself that I presented to our legal counsel and they approved. So it, it also includes the attachment of the original quote. That stays, it's part of that document. One thing that I did want to point out here, and it's for the kind of future discussion and future negotiation between Sonny or Kevin, Linky Santation and myself, is once we have studied a reasonable amount of time for the gallons of fuel that gets utilized to do the actual transfers from these sites, then we can entertain an addendum or amendment to this for fuel escalation. But both parties here, the county and the contractor, I believe, can be reasonable enough to study that and, and work together going forward on the, on the cost of fuel. Sorry, it's just something that you guys know, it's just very difficult to nail down the cost of fuel.
So for work session, and you and I never got a chance to sit down and go over this, so just for clarification, as I'm reading through this contract, it talks to Christmas Valley Transfer Site and the Paisley Transfer Site, and that's what this contract's for. Our Silver Lake and our Fort Rock Transfer Sites aren't mentioned in here. So just for clarification, how's that gonna flow?
Silver Lake and Fort Rock will be serviced by the Scale House Attendant from Christmas Valley with a dump trailer and a county pickup. And those hours won't change, nothing, no service will change there, but it'll also allow, previously, it got mixed in with a route, the North Lake Route, Eight Hairs Route. So it will also allow us to study and determine the actual tonnages that come from those two sites, doing it that way. But they are not included, those convenience centers, if you will, are not included in these two.
And I knew that, I just wanted to.
Yep. Well, there's, actually, it's a good question, because there's a lot of people who don't understand that.
Yep.
They hear the word transfer site or transfer station, but really, these four locations that we're talking about, Silver Lake and Fort Rock, are convenience centers for the public, and Christmas Valley and Paisley are also convenience centers as well, so.
And that just helps us, Bill, answer the question, because there's always a fear whenever government comes in.
Sure.
And so. So on down, Kevin, under renewal, renewal option, under B, page one there. Is that supposed to say the option to renew is on approval, that we might review?
The option to renew.
So that's just a typo that?
Yep, it is.
So that should be.
Good catch. I can, I can, I can fix that easy enough.
Yeah, I know you can, and. Okay, and, and so. So reading that, I want to make sure that it's clear, the option to renew is on approval of the current landfill manager, landfill budget and future plans at the county. Should that, renew should be at, should it say also that the board commissioners?
We can.
It says the future plan at the county, but all contracts are approved by the board commissioners.
Sure, we can. The intent here was the option to renew is on the approval of what the landfill budget will be able to allow. That's what that, that's what that was for.
So there might be a little, for me, a little bit of clarification. I don't know, Commissioner Shown.
Well, and future plans of county board commissioners, I can add that easy enough.
See, I'm gonna be part of the county here in the future, so I thought it'd be really good I'd make part of that decision.
That's what, that's, that's what, that's what the intent was of putting up the county.
Yeah, yeah, I know what the intent was, but that board commissioners change it.
Yep.
Be better spelled out. And the only other question I have is getting to where you started going on the fuel escalation. I guess this bid was based around about three fifty a gallon or whatever. Maybe we need sort of a base and then can fuel, is there anything for, if fuel goes down to two dollars a gallon?
Well, that's what, that's what I discussed with Sonny and Kevin both, was that fuel escalation is not just escalation, it's the difference in percentage from where it is now. So if it's fifteen percent below where it is now, then we need to talk about a rebate as well. And that's, and those are just things that can be documented in a future addendum. But I can put de-escalation there as well, de and escalation there.
Can you just put change in fuel price?
Yep.
Well, and this bid was based, I guess maybe I'm getting down too deep in it, but you have to know what this initial RFP was based around, how much per gallon because of?
Yeah, I mean, the RF, the quote that we asked for because of different vendors' concerns was having a lump sum or having a mileage concern bid. And so we decided to have it be a lump sum because ultimately we can do the math and understand what the mileage is. Several contractors that deal with the quote had concerns over why we wanted to do it that way and it wasn't, the argument wasn't worthwhile having, so it, it got into a lump sum cost. And their costs are what their costs are. I don't, I don't know as long as it's reasonable for us and it's a reasonable expectation that forty, what is it, forty-one thousand a year to do this transfer?
Yeah.
As long as that's reasonable and goes along with what, what is a reasonable cost for mileage is and in research it, if that is accurate, it is reasonable cost. We didn't care about their internal costs.
Okay, I just didn't know if you needed any kind of number put in that, so that whoever's trying to figure out that escalation.
Well, that, that will be part of the future negotiation onto an addendum, because in order to have true fuel escalation, you have to study it by the month, you have to follow a scale by the month. And between Sonny and myself and Kevin, that is going to be entirely cumbersome for what this is worth. That constant negotiation or constant talking once a month on how much fuel went up, three percent, three and a half percent, because you can go through town one day and it's ten cents higher than that.
Fifteen minutes later.
We didn't, between he and myself, we didn't want to do that.
I just want to make sure that whatever verbiage in there you're comfortable with, and if you went away, the next person would be comfortable.
The specific percentage that you're talking about, I guess, is to be determined between he and I or however we negotiate that in that, the next addendum, which will be part of this contract. So that means that fixes your question.
Good with that, Commissioner?
Yep. There's several different fuel escalations. When you start rooting around at different things. ODOT has a transfer industry.
I don't want to get that nuts and bolts. I just want you to be comfortable that you have the right verbiage for you to be able to do that.
It'll be in black and white when we come table with that addendum on this place. We could, we could go the next three years here, and if it stays within fifteen cents or twenty cents, it might not be a concern at all, and that's why he and I want to leave it that way.
Okay. Those were, as I read through, the only questions I had. Kevin, I don't know, Commissioner Shown, when he read through it, if he'd seen anything?
Well, those, those typos and having the board commissioners and the de-escalation on the numbers is going to be easily, easily fixed and then we'll give to you.
It'd be perfect for tomorrow when we could get that approved.
And I'll catch up, I'll catch up with him. Do you want, would you like him to have it signed before it comes to you?
Tomorrow?
Yeah. I'll get it back to you by the end of the day, signed, fixed and signed.
Okay, well, we'll take action on our subject either way. Are you coming up?
We will see.
Well, while we're talking about landfill, I'll say this. I have my two new employees starting today and we're starting to get entered into some of the corrective actions for the stormwater pollution control plan, so it's probably best that I stay close to that.
We, we will see the contract and take it with us tomorrow.
Yep.
Yep.
And, and it doesn't have to be signed by them, either way.
Well, I talked to him this morning. It can be. It's, it's ready to go on his side.
Run those Scrivener changes by a legal counsel and have it written. It'll be good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good to go.
Okay.
Anything else while we got here?
Well, I'm gonna ask just the schedule. I know things have been wild and crazy. You're out at Dog Lake now, you're out at the landfill now, you're, you're all sorts of places. But what's the schedule for the next couple of weeks? I haven't been getting quids.
So we, we completed the surface treatment for the season. We finished, we completed the majority of District Two routes that warranted oil and chip, and we also finished the season on Bear Flat Lane. We skin patched the centers of, of that road. That road had a terrible rutting issue in, at the center line joint, which held a lot of water. So we skin patched that out to basically build a crown in it, which should help Sam a great deal with winter problems. There were several times that I went up there where water would lay in the center line of that road for great long stretches, miles at a time, across the flats and then through the forest, and then it would freeze. So hopefully we've fixed that problem. And we finished that up last week. This week, today's the first day, we're putting shoulders on Dog Lake. I'm hoping to have it done by Thursday so that I can put lines on it, put the signs in, and then that project will be closed out for reimbursement for, for the feds. We have to, while we're up there, put shoulders on the, finish up the agreement with Forest Service on the slide repair. So we'll put shoulders on that while we're there as well. And then we are going to get back into general maintenance, crack sealing for next seasons, chip routes, ditching, pipe cleaning, things like that.
How about sweeping?
Well, back grooming. I wanted to specifically, on the concerns that you have, let that lay for a while just because of all the added traffic. But we are going to sweep it off because we need to put paint lines on it as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Someone made the observation that down on Mel Street, you probably got five years worth of traffic in the last three, three weeks.
Yeah, I mean, hindsight, it wouldn't, I would have never known that, but.
No, you wouldn't have known.
At the same time, there's a lot of, especially with the size of the equipment that was running up and down that road, there's a lot of scrubbing action that goes on, so even though it's a little bit frustrating to have that loose gravel on, it's better for the surface. It's a brand-new surface, so.
Yeah, it's probably more of a dust concern, Kevin, in truth, with the adjusted dust cloud.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get it groomed off so we can put, we have to put line paints on it, line painting, because we're gonna get that out. Oh, probably at the end of next week. And then I have, I have a little bit of CFS oil that we're going to fog seal one route similar to what you saw ODOT do and through Paisley. We chipped a couple routes with some a little bit larger size aggregate, and so we're going to see what we think of a stretch of fog seal on the short piece between Three Ninety-Five and Rabbit Hill, Willow Bridge and Rabbit Hill Road itself. And then that'll conclude the surface treatment.
Very good.
Yep. Very good.
What about Plush Park?
End of the month. I guess it is, I guess it is worth noting now, although he hasn't gotten back to me. I was approached by Darryl Anderson, as a representative of the town, to ask or consider fixing the intersection at Missouri and I think it's J Street as an inter-agency agreement. But I haven't seen that paperwork come through yet. You may see that at the next meeting. But I haven't seen that paperwork come through yet. You may see that at the next meeting.
Okay.
The town is having problems for the cost of doing business, acquiring or finding somebody that wants to do that job. So they're asking, we would entertain that through an interagency agreement.
So Kevin, on that, if you had an opportunity to talk with Jared Johnson or with the town manager, there was a pretty darn good plan for ODOT to come in and completely change that whole intersection. I don't know further ad on that before many dollars was put in. And I know it has, it's a terrible intersection for tunnels and everything. But I don't know further ad on that process. I heard at one time they didn't like the design and some liked the design. But if the town, if they're going to, or the state's going to be putting quite a bit of money in there, I'd be more of a, of just a patched amount of tunnels.
Is that the one out here?
By the, by the cemetery.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Well, the, he asked me as a representative of Ford Town, so I assume that some of that discussion on their part has already taken place. From my side of things, they're just asking if they can get help through an interagency agreement to get the work done. As far as decision making, that'll be up to them.
Okay. Yeah, you're right.
I'm not, I'm, I'm not going to put a whole lot of, I have enough entertainment, so that's their deal. If they want help and we can help them and it makes sense to do that for the community, then we will. But their homework they'll have to do on their selves.
Okay. I didn't know if this was a permanent fix or a.
I don't believe, I don't believe it is because they talked about doing some patching. But when you start patching that out, over fifty percent of it needs patching. So that doesn't, that's not, that doesn't make sense. I'm not sure of the exact plan. I just thought it was worth noting that in the future it'll, if they decide that's the way they want to go, we may bring that to you.
Yeah, it's, it's a huge intersection. When the county had it, it was always a problem. It sort of needs to be teed up there and fixed.
It is to be teed up is right. There's too many options there and that's why it doesn't stay.
It's a.
Maintenance nightmare.
High accident prone place and everything.
Too many, too many options.
But that is their call, as you say. And I wasn't asking you to get involved.
No, I was.
I, I thought that they, ODOT was a key player. So I thought maybe it was going to be teed up and everything, but.
I'll ask, I will ask the question since you brought it up because I didn't know that either. But I will ask the question, but as far as managing it, their decision.
Yeah, it's their decision. If, if it comes that we need an intergovernmental agreement to do a little bit of work.
We can, we can help them if it works out that way.
Yep.
I guess, and lastly, for the landfill sake, because I probably will be having more updates or department information on the landfill. We're acquiring more of our tools that we need to start. I've completed the operations plan that's been approved by DEQ for our new site with Ken Lucas. The permits I have now signed and in place. So we're getting closer to day one. We have some stormwater management things that we need to take care of first because that's the process is to take care of that first and get that established. And that's what we're, we're going on today.
Very good. Hey, this is monumental. Thank you. It's huge, huge in our world of getting to where we're at today. And the groundwater next week, you never do know. We're, we're not far from winter coming on, so.
Yeah, we're working on it. And I have stacked papers about like that and approved that we're working on. That's a cumbersome process.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
I'll get this to you.
Thank you. See you later. If we get any questions up there we can't field, we'll get back to it.
Yeah, I'm sure you'll get, I know a couple that you'll get.
And, and just a little bit of an update. I did talk with Dick Offly, you know, I talked to you about the Anna reservoir area and if the water district up there, if we could lay that much here or anything. I had a discussion with him just prior to this meeting that they need to get some material before we consider that. So they have material that they can get, native stuff, but they don't have a way to haul it yet, so.
Well, Dave, Dave and I discussed that a little bit too. And coming back from Silver Lake the other day, I drove down in there and I don't think that's anything that we can't make happen as long as they can provide the material to do initially.
Yeah, yeah. We don't have any work planned up there that we would have.
No, it's unfortunate because this last fall, I, we redid a lot of those gravel roads in that, in that country right there. But, but it's not, it's not so far out of the way that we can't make that work.
Okay. Well, we'll, we'll keep working on things because this will keep them in compliance on their certifications. And it wouldn't be that expensive for them to pay us once a year to go across it.
No, I won't be there.
Thanks, Kevin. Appreciate that support.
Yep, thank you.
Mr. Johnson, non-disturbance and so comes in there, so organization agreement.
Morning.
Good morning.
New San Energy has, it was sent in a updated legal description of Arrivenia, non-disturbance agreement with the county on for legal rights. These are pretty standard at this point. We've reviewed these before and have agreed to a theory to the template. This is, this language is, is the same that we've agreed to before on other non-disturbance agreements. Just has an updated legal description of that.
Yeah, didn't, didn't we, they missed the legal description on the last.
They showed us on the map, in email, the map.
Yep.
It's a pretty simple check forward if you have any questions.
As long as you've checked the township range and all that?
Yeah, that's right.
That's correct.
That's where we're good to go.
I do have one other thing that I'd like to have added to your agenda tomorrow if you needed. And I have touch bases, I believe, with, with folks here a little bit about this actually, Commissioner Kestner as well. There's the county applied for grant with, in connection with the town, a few of the city pays in for that economic opportunities analysis. I was awarded, I've been delivered a memorandum of understanding, which would give the level goals, what are the expectations of the county are, not really as a convenient to help the cities, move the city and town along in this process to establish committees and, and see the, some analysis about on our end. So that the consultant that the state has hired to do many counties, one of which we are, and cities, then we'd be able to kind of just make sure we have a project lead and lead on that and move that forward. So I will certainly probably be that person and may have someone to help me out on that as we move forward. So it's an agreement that does include each of, you know, the county, the town and the city. It just needs to be signed and hopefully get that done tomorrow so we can get back to the state right away.
Okay. And so that economic analysis grant is going through the town of Lakeview.
So come, so there's no money. I should have said that right away. Unfortunately, the consultant will probably get the money on this. And you will not have to really spend any money other than time. And so on that, there will be a lot of time spent on myself helping this along. The, yeah, the agreement actually is through the county and with the signers as well. So it's all three parties.
Okay, so.
And they've signed, the town's already signed and Paisley signs tomorrow.
All right. So get that agreement, legal council review, and then we can add that to our agenda tomorrow.
Yeah. And I was also planning on being there tomorrow, but if you need to.
Sure, okay. I don't, I don't.
Because of this, maybe, but I'll follow up with you before the day's end and then.
Yeah, follow up before the day's end. It's the, takes you out unless you can double over some of your.
I'm sure there's things I can do, but I'd rather not just with it.
Okay, I'm fine.
I think it's going to be fine, Darwin.
I think it'll be fine.
And legal counsel will be there tomorrow too, so.
And it's really simple. I mean, there's not a lot to it. It's page, twelve page nine, which is pretty repetitive. Where it talks about these tasks as a personal mission. About the first two pages, you're good to go and the rest of that, so.
The only one we're requiring to drive all the way there tomorrow is Dave Berman. He can have thirty seconds of time.
That's probably appropriate.
Hey, give me that frown right there. Darwin, that'll be great.
Yep, sounds good.
So just one other clarification. You will be, are a person from the county. You said maybe someone else or is there?
I'll be the lead and then it does ask in the agreement that we have a project manager on it at the local level.
So I told Darwin he needed to visit with you because.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Very good.
Melanie, please, please add that.
I'll get you more details.
Okay.
All right. Next, we have Mr. Berman, contract with sale amendment.
Mine's pretty simple. You guys know more about it than I do.
No.
Whoa.
How bad?
I, I already have a correction. It's pretty simple.
Which one?
Just, just add amendment number one to the contract. Just add number one.
Why didn't they tell me to do that when you said it?
Well, because of, we have to give him direction. And that, that just puts it in order if there's any other amendments, Dave. So it's just, I, I never got a chance this morning to mention that.
Okay.
To me, it looks like, after working on this with you, it looks like it captured everything. Or it does capture everything that was wrong with the original contract. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Well, Dave and I just barely talked about this last week. I'm still a little confused because the, the title company had, the contract had one thing for that stuff across the road. And the title company had something else. So when it goes to the title company, it just needs to not have anything across the road.
Yeah, the one part on the title will be completely, that the title company had will be completely eliminated. And it will just have basically this verbiage under number two, the map number and except lots four.
You're talking Exhibit A, the legal description from the title company.
Probably.
Does it have?
Except lots one to forty-eight block three oh two, already going valid for land company, third additions account. Can you take that out because block two ninety-two?
Right, it's just the off.
Right off.
Right off, yes, sorry.
The second one on there should be completely eliminated. If I'm right, memory serves me correct.
And the married title does that, that'll be in their description.
We just want to tell them we want that eliminated off of that. And, and they need a copy of the amendment to the contract. And it should be, Commissioner Shound can go sign. I didn't even let you speak. Sorry about that.
Sorry. I really don't have a whole lot to say anyway.
So that's the only thing I would think that needs amendment number one, just, just in case there's ever another amendment to the contract.
Sometimes less is more.
Sometimes less is more.
There you go.
Sometimes more is less.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do. If you get it there now, later on, it's a lot less work.
Okay, there you go.
What else you got for us, Dave?
Any updates? I have other things to update.
Well, I think you, you got a little bit on the airport. You were successful in the grant.
Oh, yes, yes, sorry.
I just wasn't.
Yes, we, the regional solution grant we put in for, for our power, our utility out at the airport, we was awarded a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do those projects that we, they weren't a master plan of things. And they've been desperately needed from, for so many reasons, maintenance, just for everything. So we were awarded that, which is awesome for the airport. So now we can.
And we, and in addition to that, we got the new water line all in.
Yes, yes, the new water line is in. We had to. We were at a point where, we had to. We couldn't go no more for several reasons. One, for the maintenance. We just kept costing us money fixing it. Because each time you dig a hole and repair it, it's close to a thousand dollars every time. So it was a long time due. And then for another reason, we needed to get it done before the connect project. But we got where, we won't, we won't be doing any paving this year. It'll be spring, just the way with the FAA dollars, the FAA decision on the scope of the work had, we had to make some changes for the funding on the grant site through the FAA. And we're still working with that. So it's not.
I would remember it. You were wanting to delay it because of the commissioner liaison. You didn't want him to be there when it was being done.
Well, that's what I told him last week. And I said, just take your time.
Yeah.
We don't want him involved. So if you could just.
Just hold on.
Hold on.
So I, on a serious meaning, I gotta ask you about, how's it going with the airport in Paisley with this fire? I, I noticed a great deal of equipment out there, even on the runway. Did we have a NOTAM?
Yes, we have NOTAM. We also have contract with them, of course, and.
So Tom's keeping up with all of the deals that they're doing out there.
You can go out and down. Tom will tell you everything that's going on.
Yeah, they have their.
They keep that Chad?
Yeah.
For Chad to like keep in contact with, huh?
Good.
So I don't believe either one of you were at the parade yesterday, which is fine. But if you would have been there, you would have seen Goose Lake Rail there switching over the railroad. They were awesome. Their new high rail rig, almost all the employees except for the ones operating the train at the time.
Oh, they were in the parade?
They were in the parade. I was very proud and very, I don't want to say emotional, but just made me feel good.
Satisfied.
That they're representing Lake County and theirself as a business here. Looked very professional. So just for you guys to know that. If you see them, tell them thank you.
I will.
Very much appreciated, so.
Oh, yeah. I was out and so I didn't.
Yeah, I, I seen you in your camouflage, so I knew you had some other things. And Dan had family things going on, I believe. Yep, it was a very, very nice parade, very good weekend, so. That's all the.
Yeah, I'll go, I'll go.
Yeah. Very good.
It's time. Well, real quick, we're getting ready to, I had the guys go out today to look at the roof on the road building. We have to do some repair for the, for the road department.
That's the project. You're going to have to draw all of your screws in.
Yes, yes. We have to get that done because that main officer is loose really bad. You know, the, and all of his loose screws up there. You go up there and the screws are off. So they're going to have to go up there and do something and get it tightened up, so. Kevin and I are doing some trade, trading.
That'd be good.
And they'll be all buck over it like hell.
Right.
You, you'll be blamed for other leaks whenever it doesn't work.
Oh, yeah. That's okay. I'd be blamed for a lot of things. I'm, I'm getting pretty thick, thicker skin on that stuff, so. I mean, I do it when it is.
That's good.
So I'll make the change on this. And do I have to be a third tomorrow?
No.
Okay.
No, I just kidding.
All right, so just thirty seconds.
We'll be good to go.
Okay?
All right. Thank you.
I'll go make the statement. Amendment to contract number one.
Amendment number one, too.
Amendment number one.
Yep, yep.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. All right, Bailey and Arma, memorandum of understanding. Mr. Bailey had talked to us individually and with today's world and technology and a few other discussion points between him and each one of us come up with amended memorandum of understanding between us and them for his presence at meetings. I, I guess for discussion, I would like to, if we approve this tomorrow, which I believe we probably will, I would like to try to maybe start using during our meetings, whenever he's not present, Skype or whatever it is for legal updates. It might only be five minutes long to be able to use. If it's, if we're capable of doing that. If not, start working on that. Because it is the changing of times and being able to keep costs down. I mean, if we look at our costs for legal counsel, we've been very lucky. It has not went up for many, many years. It's expensive, but whenever there's not even an inflation factor in there, everything that we do sort of helps keep that price worked out, so. You have comments or thoughts, Commissioner?
Well, the fact that our retainer will remain the same and we go into on the second page.
Well, the fact that our retainer will remain the same, and we go into on the second page, once again, the, the building that exceeds thirty-six hours per calendar year, we had an agreement, we, I don't know that we ever kept that close to track, but since we're not going to require onsite presence at each annual meeting, I almost think unless something really weird happens, there should be a note, something that says we're not gonna exceed our retainer ever. Because there is a real benefit to, when the pro trip, someone will have to, others that are usually calculating, they have value typically.
Yeah, at minimum, probably.
Yeah, and so, you know, I don't, I, I think because of the professional services, and you're correct, and the non-increase in rate over the years, at least the last twelve years, uh, I'm fine with all that, just some kind of note that, you know, it's, it's probably gonna be, we're probably gonna bank more than thirty-six hours. So, you know, we have, it's been years since we got any additional cost built. Just a little discussion on that tomorrow, probably.
I have, uh, on number six, I have a question mark there, so we'll have some discussion with legal counsel.
Yeah, yeah.
Who's gonna legally represent in this, while we're negotiating our legal contract? The whole Melody, Melody raised her hand. Bill will be fine, I, that'll be, that's, I think that discussion needs to be had.
Yeah, just.
Yep. Very good, all right. Next is the fifth amendment to O H A agreement, and this was a huge agreement that was sent to us electronically. I'm sure that legal counsel has fully reviewed the whole thing, right, Melanie?
He said he didn't see.
Word for word, huh?
Because it, it's not a lot of, it's the same as it was before, they're just doing, um, an electronic transfer funds instead of a traditional check. From what I, what I took from it.
Okay, and so those funds still come to Lake County before they go to our contractor, correct?
Yeah, and so we'll, um, we'll enroll, um, and then, it'll, it'll just come E H C or E C H or whatever that is.
P C H? Or no.
D H S and O H A.
E, E F T? E F T?
All right.
Such a weird, I can't argue with you, it's like.
All right, so that's for tomorrow, uh, department updates.
We did get some.
We did get some, um, liaisons on updates.
Oh, no, it's.
I'll do a department update.
Oh, we can do a department update.
So after speaking with Teresa Ponley, and she spoke with Marcia Owens, we're not going to apply in November for stip funding, we're not applying in May. That way we will attend, um, financial training, and then we will have their finances pinned down before we do an application. She thinks it'd just be good to have a great, solid plan before we submit our application.
Well, and your providers are in agreement with, with that, and that's the key, key, probably key comment, is the providers want to make sure that they present the best they can, get the best.
I was a little fearful to bring it up to them, but they were all in agreement, and it makes sense to have a good, good concrete application.
Yep. So you note, you noted when we got started with our meeting, Melanie, you thought we were all gonna be here, have you got any update on their, on their?
He was a little under the weather as well, um, he said he might not be here, uh, but he does have something to do tomorrow, so he won't be up north. If he feels up to that, you know, I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
So liaisons on updates, um, the fair, as a fair board member, um, went pretty well, there, there is normal complaints as always. One of our biggest things at the fair this year was, uh, preparation ahead of time. We've noted several different things that the fair board will be working on with our fair manager, uh, to improve and different thoughts. One, one of the things that we continue to run into is the power issues out there, we had an electrician there, um, Thursday, Friday, um, we have different, different things happening with power, a lot of use. Even though technology's getting better, it seems like it's taking more and more power to operate everything, so we'll be looking at that out there. Went pretty well, the roundup side of it, I participated in going to the roundups, uh, both Sunday and Monday. Roundup was, the, the rodeo was exceptional, uh, the metal militia that they had for entertainment was incredible. The professionalism out there there was, was great, and it was just a great weekend, uh, had people, you know, there's plenty of people that have complaints, but there was offside of that, is there was people came up and, and complimented on different things. And so, um, that went pretty well, um, overall, we noted some things, and I think for the roundups, hundredth year next year, uh, be more than a hundred years for the fair, but will be a key part of it. I think it's gonna be exceptional next year. I'm really, uh, very proud of all involved, you know, you, you can't single out roundup, fair board, extension service for H F F A or any of it, just have to, even with the little butchers, everything went pretty well, so.
Well, you know, I'm kind of the outsider looking in on all this stuff, and when we get past fair and roundup, kind of the conversation that I had with Dan Roberts, year and week or something, I don't know if Dan had a chance to follow up with you, that it'd be great, the main users from, you know, the county owns it, the, the, the round association, the fair board, and the horse group, and any other primary users, it seemed like, and this is from an outside view, that there sometimes is some confusion over, not who owns the fairgrounds, but who's gonna take care of these things. It'd be great if some of the O D Cs and stuff, I could get worked out, it sounded like with the, what's the name of the horse group?
Horsemen's Association, Lake County Horsemen Association.
Yeah, that has a lot of different bits down there, that, it sounded like they were confused as to who's gonna prep, you know, the, the grounds and do different things, and I don't know what the agreements are.
Well, I think it's plain, that's pretty easy, because the Lake County Horsemen Association pays to use the arena with that comes arena prep.
Yeah, so, you know, that, that would resolve that issue, because he was talking about possibly if they needed to do something. I said, I don't know, you need to, you need to talk to Commissioner or something.
And absolutely encourage them to come to the fair board meeting and present solutions or problems, and, but yeah, aware of that some, and we do have somebody on the fair board that represents the horseman association, so.
Good deal.
But, no, you, um, jump around to, you mentioned several different, you're exactly right, uh, our fair board president and manager goes to the roundup association meetings. We're all one, but we have a tendency to be separate at different times, and we're really working to bring that continuity together, um, between all of it.
And I found it interesting, Commissioner, you were talking about the power, and I realized that partly more so with the roundup, I would guess that their power needs are increasing for different technology they're using, but I would have thought we'd have saw less demand with the new lighting, because that's pretty widespread, you know, the, the whole of power, on power seems to be, you know, one of the selling points for what we did there.
Yeah, on, on the lighting, absolutely, and less lighting helps with the, with the drain, the kind of lights are on. But if you look at all the vendors that are there, and they're all needing fifty amp instead of thirty amp, for running their operations now, you know, the fryers and everything, then you look at the, the concert, and you look at the rodeo, the size of speakers and all the amps and everything they run now, um, as we reduce one, the others are, the others are coming up, and, uh, we're, we're looking, and then you go to the, the, the fair animals, a lot of people packing generators now because of their, heaters slash blowers take a lot more to do all that, so, um, we're, we know we have, uh, some issues, and we're looking at them. One of the issues we ran into on the fair side is, is just the preventive maintenance, it's, uh, trimming the trees, the trees up in the power lines, rub the power lines, and then they short out, and so it's just the deferred maintenance is the normal thing. That is one of the things that we've seen, and then, we just need to double check all the power, June, July, before it's down crunch time.
Yep.
But, those things, um, so it was, in my words, was a very successful fair and roundup. Other quick liaison updates, have vehicle committee meeting this afternoon at three o'clock, um, Melanie, our fleet manager, um, we're gonna be discussing, discussing, um, the vehicles that we have that are in operation, longevity of vehicles, um, with the cost of, um, vehicles now, and especially on the sheriff's side, and outfit, and it's quite an investment. We're gonna have to look at, uh, as a group, and recommendation to the full board of, uh, what, what do we think longevity of these vehicles for the investment? The cascade effect that I worked on so much over the years with our fleet manager, I think we have fulfilled our obligation. We need to have a different look, maybe a different vision as a vehicle committee to make recommendations to the board commissioners, so I'll be, uh, very excited about that, and Melanie, she has learned a lot, um, she, she understands that she is a fleet manager, so I think people are starting to give her the respect that, that she deserves as a fleet manager. And I, I like to use the near words, um, we've been there, done that before on different ways of management, we're not going backwards. And I, I really appreciate the support to have a fleet manager, and that fleet manager to keep people in check, so I just wanted to reassure that with Melanie this afternoon with the advisory.